Good, good evening everyone. It is six o'clock and time to begin this meeting of the Gallatin City Council for Tuesday, August 17th, 2021. I welcome all of you and welcome all of the council. We're going to begin this meeting like we do each of our meetings with the invocation, the pledge of allegiance. Councilman Alexander is going to offer our blessing this evening and Councilman Fan is going to lead us in the pledge. If you'd stand with me, please.
Would everyone please join me in a word of prayer. Father God, we come once again with Thanksgiving in our hearts. We pray, oh God, that thou would bless this city in a mighty way. We thank you for this council and all that it stands for. But Lord, we ask a special blessing upon our children of this in school now about this mandate on masks or not. Bless our teachers, dear Lord, as they struggle to teach our kids and try to cope with this pandemic that's going on in our city. But Lord, whatever you do, whatever you say, let us be receptive to you, your way and your word. In the mighty and precious name of Jesus, I do pray and every heart say it.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All, Ms. Kettrel, would you call the roll for us, please? Vice Mayor Fennell.
Here.
Councilman Alexander.
Present.
Councilman Fan.
Here.
Councilwoman George.
Here.
Councilman Hayes.
Present.
Ms. Love is absent and Councilman Overton.
Here.
Mayor, we have a quorum. Thank you so much. With that, you have before you the minutes from August 3rd, 2021.
First approved.
Council meetings. Have a motion to approve by Councilman Overton and a second by Councilman Alexander. Are there any additions or corrections? Seeing none, all in favor of approving the August 3rd minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. The minutes are approved unanimously. Now we're onto public recognition on agenda-related items. This is the time of the meeting where you can address any item that is on the evening's agenda. We ask that you introduce yourself, give us your name and address, and you'll have five minutes to speak. I also want you to know that there's a time at the end of the meeting where you can speak to anything that's not on the agenda. So if it's on the agenda, now's your time to speak. You're welcome to come forward at this time. Public recognition on agenda-related items is now open.
Pascal Jovens, 1335 Long Island Park. Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, council. Couple of things tonight. Item one on the food truck and trying to restrict their hours of operation. I don't know why we're trying to restrict hours of operation for small business. We have plenty of ordinance we can apply. They should be authorized to work as much as they want, as long as they follow ordinance. If they make noise, if they want to serve food at midnight and we want food at midnight and they don't break the noise ordinance, great. I don't think restaurants are limited on time. I'm not familiar with that. Maybe I'm wrong, but I think a restaurant can open as long as they can. So why don't a food truck? Again, if they make noise, police, fine, respect the noise ordinance, but they should be open. If they want to start at six in the morning, serve breakfast, why don't they can start at six in the morning? Facebook worked all night. That was not an issue. So why not the small business? On the, I have a question, maybe be able to answer later. On the walnut crest down on, I would like to know why the sudden 180 reversal on what we heard between few weeks and last week, where a few weeks ago that was, we don't want to authorize it because we have a T-DOT conflict and we don't want T-DOT to think we're going to do something when they try to run, run and maybe make this intersection better for us for traffic and suddenly we don't care anymore. We're going to authorize it. I heard, you know, the usual, again, I appreciate it's on Facebook now, so I can follow you from far away. Thanks for doing that. But I had the developer again using fear tactics. So we can build it and put rental, let him build it and put rental. He doesn't want to do that. He wants to cash in. So if he can put rental, why not? Probably need rentals too, not just done houses. So again, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else that wishes to speak under public recognition on agenda-related items, you come forward at this time. Okay, seeing no one indicating that they wish to speak, I'll declare public recognition on agenda-related items closed. Maybe now to mayor's comments, just a couple of things I want to mention. We had kind of a fun day. I think Councilman Overton and I both were at two groundbreakings. The county did. While they are well under construction, both the courthouse and Liberty Creek had their official groundbreakings today and we were able to attend. So that was exciting. We also, Chamber had a fun ribbon cutting for Freedom Boat Club out at the marina, which I didn't even know they were in Gallatin. So it was fun to welcome them. Want to mention that the fire department's training, the live burn that you heard about last week goes on for one more day. I think they're doing their final burn at three tomorrow. So if you have the opportunity to go out there and see what they're doing, I went by there yesterday and I'm going to try and go again tomorrow, you can do that. It's a great opportunity to kind of see the firefighters in action in a controlled environment. They certainly don't want us there when there's an actual fire. So I think it'd be good to stop by and check out their hard work. Finally, I want to say thank you to unlimited potential community development corporation. They did this past weekend about the food drive and a field day back to back in the community. So I appreciate their efforts on that. Couple of events coming up. Third Thursday on the square happens this week. It's Darryl Warley with Adam and Amy Pope. That starts at 6:30 on the square, of course. The Moonlight Market is happening again this week. That's at the farmer's market on Friday evening. On Saturday is the Southern County Bridal and Women's Show happening at Epic. It happens actually on Saturday and Sunday. Hours on Saturday are 10 a.m. to 5 p.m. Hours on Sunday are 12 to four. On Monday, it's James Vinton's birthday. And then Tuesday, I just wanted to remind you all that we are having our special called meeting. It's the joint meeting with the Gallatin Planning Commission and it's to work on Plan Gallatin. And I would encourage you all to go through that plan. If you don't want to do it online and you don't want to print it at home, let us know. We'll print a copy for you. But you really do need to go through that plan. You know, look for anything that you think may be correct or particularly, I would encourage you to think about things that might be missing, things that weren't mentioned that should have been. Considerations that we need to make sure that we include in there that maybe didn't get touched upon because we want the plan to be a good one. So work on that before the meeting next week. You can submit the comments through their online form at Plan Gallatin. Sorry, that was the timer for you, Mr. Jevots. We're moving along. And you can submit the comments online, as can the public. Public also is certainly welcome to do the same. Plangallatin.com and you can go there and you can go through the plan yourself and add your comments. Certainly you're welcome to email them directly to either me or to GNRC and give them also next week at the meeting. I think the sooner they get our feedback, the better. So that's all and what's coming up. And with that, we will proceed to the regular agenda.
Question?
Absolutely. The, if there's comments, can we send them in and with enough time where they could correct it before the meeting or is that something we'll?
I, I don't know. I don't know. I would think that they would have some utility through which they will have them noted as we go through. Because I know what's going to happen. They're going to get, you know, 15 comments all on a grammatical error, you know, that evening. And that's why I want to like get my feedback to them early because I would like to see those things corrected before we actually start stepping through it. There are some, you know, just basic syntax corrections starting to happen. So, okay, thank you. Moving on to the regular agenda, the first item is second reading on ordinance 02107-45. For that item, Councilman Hayes, you are recognized.
Yeah, this is an ordinance of the city of Gallatin, Tennessee, providing that the code of ordinances of the city of Gallatin be amended by adding a new article to chapter 11, therein providing for the regulation of mobile food vendors. Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilman Hayes, a second by Councilman Fan up in the floor for discussion.
Do we need to make an amendment on the cost? I mean, I think that's what we had decided.
We had a cost discussion, we had an hours discussion, and we had the discussion about where the administrator could grant extended hours. So I don't know.
I think the cost, I think we decided 130, was that right?
I think that was.
130.
Okay, yeah. Make an amendment?
Okay.
Amendment offered by Councilman Hayes, seconded by Councilman Overton. Do you all want to discuss the amendment about adjusting the cost to $130?
Well, I mean, we're just doing that just because that was barely covering the cost for the city. I mean, it might not be covering all of it, but that was closer than what we had. So, all right.
Further discussion? Okay, this is a vote on the amendment to change the cost for the permit from a, to $130. All those in favor, please say aye. Opposed, please say no. Okay, that amendment passes unanimously. Ms. Haumacalli, do we need the, where are we with the, have they already been amended? The hours, the extended hours? I think we did that after, at first reading.
The hours right now are 5 a.m. until 11 p.m. And then I think what you were discussing, it is in section 1120, 11-274. And that is in A3. That's hours of operation. And the last sentence right there says the city may permit extended hours of operation for a food truck rally. And what we had discussed at the work session was that we could change that to the permit administrator may permit extended hours of operation for a food truck. Or just period, yeah.
Yeah, I'll make that as amendment.
Amendment offered by Councilman Hayes to change it to, which do you prefer, rally and food truck or just has the authority to?
Authority to, yeah.
Second.
Question by Councilman Hayes, second by Councilman Overton. Any discussion on that? All in favor of the amendment, please say aye. Opposed, please say no. If that amendment passes as well unanimously, which takes us back to the original motion. Any further discussion on the original motion? Okay, this is second reading on ordinance 02107-45. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, say no. It is passed unanimously. Item number two is second reading on ordinance 02107-47. Vice Mayor Fennell, you are recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. This is ordinance appropriating $8,782.56 for economic development agency vehicle lease. Motion to approve.
Second.
Question by Vice Mayor Fennell.
Yes, motion approved.
By second?
It's Hayes.
A second by Councilman Hayes. I'm sorry, Ms. Haumacalli had a question. She was making sure we were doing things right. So have a motion and second, any discussion? This is second reading on ordinance 02107-47. All in favor, please say aye. Opposed, say no. It is passed unanimously. Item three is a first reading on ordinance 02107-44 and Councilwoman George is recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. This is an ordinance of the city of Gallatin, Southern County, Tennessee, rezoning 31.1 plus or minus acre parcel from CS Commercial Services District to the MRO, Multiple Residential and Office District with the preliminary master development plan for Walnut Crest Townhomes located northeast of the intersection of Long Howard Pike and SR 109. Authorizing the revision to be indicated on the official zoning atlas, repealing conflicting ordinances, providing for severability and providing for an effective date.
Second.
Question by Councilwoman George, a second by Councilman Hayes, opening the floor for discussion. I am kind of concerned about the path that this has taken because, you know, I shared with you and Mr. McCord shared with you that we're waiting on some information from T-DOT that could potentially impact this property. And, you know, I wanted to see us defer it for a little bit. And while the developer did say that he would certainly work with the city when that information comes in, I just, you know, we're setting up a new zoning, not really that the commercial zoning was very viable with the road having been built through there. But I just really would have preferred for us to keep it deferred.
It's a first reading and we've still got a public hearing and second reading too, so we can always defer it if we need to, so.
I just wanted to make that statement because.
I think we're all aware of that, about that traffic and everything.
Wanted to remind you. Okay, any other discussion on this? Okay, this is first reading on ordinance 02107-44. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, say no. It does pass unanimously. Item number four is first reading on 02108-48. Councilwoman Love isn't here this evening. Vice Mayor Fennell, can you take that, please?
Yes, I'd be glad to. This is ordinance of the city of Gallatin, rezoning approximately 2.74 acres plus or minus from the R40 low density residential zoning to the R15 medium density residential zoning district located east of Airport Road and northeast of Broadway Street, authorizing the revision to be indicated on the official zoning atlas, repealing conflicted ordinances, providing for severability and providing for an effective date. Motion to approve.
Question to approve by Vice Mayor Fennell, second by Councilman Alexander. Is there any discussion on this? Okay, this is first reading on ordinance 02108-48. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, say no. It is passed unanimously. Item number five is first reading on ordinance 02108-49. Councilman Alexander.
Thank you, Mayor. This is ours awarding bids and authorizing funds in the total amount of $2,600,000 from water and sewage revenue for Hartropike Waters Storage Tank. And I so move.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Alexander, second by Councilman Fan. Any discussion on this? I think it's an exciting project. Glad to see it get done. All in favor of first reading on ordinance 02108-49, please say aye. Opposed, say no. It does pass unanimously. Item number six is first reading on ordinance 02108-50. Councilman Hayes.
Yeah, this is an ordinance of the city of Gallatin, Tennessee, approving an amended preliminary master development plan for Villas on the Greens, phases one and two, on a 13.06 acre lot located south of Nashville Pike, north of Noah Lane and west of Plantation Boulevard, authorizing the revision to be indicated on the official zoning atlas, repealing conflicting ordinances and providing for severability and providing for an effective date. Motion to approve.
Second.
Question to approve by Councilman Hayes, a second by Councilman Overton. Any discussion on this?
Mayor, I was gone last week. Is this, is this the property that's behind Lowe's that we're discussing right now?
No, this is the, you know, the Villas on, Villas across from Kennesaw.
Yes.
It's that, it's that property.
There any problems during discussion?
I think they're adding four units, I think, is that what called?
And maybe doing them as triplexes instead of quadruplexes or something like that. So, yeah.
It's okay with you being in your district, Greg. Okay.
It passed their planning.
And this is first reading on ordinance 02108-50. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, say no. It is passed unanimously. Item number seven is resolution R2108-55. Councilman Overton.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a resolution approving updated consultant selection policy for the city of Gallatin. Special project funds funded in whole or part with funds provided by the Federal Highway Administration or Tennessee Department of Transportation. I so move.
Motion by Councilman Overton, second by Councilman Alexander. Anyone wish to discuss or need further information? Okay, this is resolution R2108-55. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. It is approved unanimously. Moves on to second reading. Item number eight is resolution R2108-56. Councilman Overton.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a resolution appointing Rosemary Bates, William McCord, Nick Tuttle and Richard DePree as committee members of the consultant evaluation committee. I so move.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Overton, second by Councilwoman George. Any discussion? This is resolution R2108-56. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, say no. It is passed unanimously. Item number nine is resolution R2108-57. Councilman Fan.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a resolution authorizing agreement with Gallatin Noon Rotary Club for addition of improvements, maintenance, repairs at Liberty Branch Park. I so move.
Motion by Councilman Fan, second by Councilman Alexander. Any discussion on this? The Rotary Club continuing to work on this amenity for our citizens and look forward to the future of it. Anyone else? All right, this is resolution R2108-57. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, say no. It is passed unanimously. Item 10 is resolution R2108-58. Vice Mayor Fennell, you're recognized.
This is a resolution appoint Sam Kirby to Gallatin Construction Board of Adjustments and Appeals. Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Vice Mayor Fennell, a second by Councilman Alexander. Is there any discussion? This is resolution R2108-58. All in favor indicate by saying aye. Opposed, say no. It is passed unanimously. And item 11 is resolution R2108-59. Councilman Alexander.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a resolution awarding health, vision and dental insurance contract for the city of Gallatin. And I so move.
Second.
Question by Councilman Alexander, second by Councilwoman George. Any questions, discussion, need any further information?
I, I just want to say that, that the city of Gallatin has agreed to pay the employee's only premium for the basic dental and plan effective start October 1st, 2021.
Yes, there was an increase that we didn't want this year, but it happened. So, but our employees are still covered at 100% in the basic plan. So I think that's a good benefit that we offer our employees. I really appreciate you all continuing to support that. Plus we cover the dental and benefits program. I think our employees appreciate it and feel good about it. Anyone else? All right, this is resolution R2108-59. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, say no. It is passed unanimously and that does conclude the regular agenda. And it brings us now to other business. I would ask this council, anyone has any other business to bring forward? I have one item, but y'all can go ahead. Ms. Haumacalli and I do need to discuss with you all the redistricting plan. You may or may not know that since this data came down this week for redistricting purposes, we have started to look at, well, actually I say we, our IT department has started to look at it, but it is showing our census number somewhere around 44,000. So our council districts are going to result in a population distribution of about 9,000 people each. And assuming, and I'm going to ask that you all let me know, but assuming that everyone intends to seek reelection and we try to work to keep you in those districts, please let us know. You know, if you for some reason decide that this is your last term to run, then we can potentially look at some other schematics. But the important thing that this council needs to do tonight, and I'll ask Ms. Haumacalli to chime in, is we have to establish what our committee is going to be to, to approve the census, to approve the redistricting. And, and I think, Ms. Haumacalli, is that acceptable?
That is, that is acceptable and that's the way it has been in the past. As I have looked at the history of it, I think what's happened, IT with help of city attorney has gone in and provided some options and then it's all discussed in open meetings at council. You can do it that way or you can select a council member, mayor and city employees to be the committee to bring it back. It's however the council chooses.
Yeah, I, I'm really fine with the council being the committee because I don't really see that, we're not dealing with 15 districts and we're not, you know, dealing with something that is going to have a whole lot of options. I mean, to try and keep people in their districts and keep the numbers fairly dispersed, it's going to be kind of cut and dry, I think.
We done it last time. It was a pretty smooth process. So that's how we do it again.
Yeah, I would love to get it done and get it to the election commission.
When was the last time it was done?
In '11.
What was the population then?
I don't know. Was it 30?
Right at 30,000, a little bit over.
30, 32 or something, yeah.
So we still would keep five districts?
Oh, it'll change.
Yeah, we would have to change the charter if you want to change the number of districts. And I don't think we have the time to do that because it would have to go back to the state legislature. I mean, you certainly can do that at some point in the future, but we can't do it in time to get the information to the election commission in time for elections next year. Okay, we're going to be the committee. We hope to have something on work session next week and, and move along. Thank you all. I see Mr. DePree standing up.
Thank you, Mayor. Richard DePree, Public Works Superintendent. Public Works, we're looking to put a banner out in front of our building to try to attract some potential employees with our hiring process. There is a $25 temporary sign permit fee that I'm requesting to be waived.
Motion to waive, second.
Question by Councilman Overton, second by Vice Mayor Fennell. Any discussion? All in favor of waiving the fee for Public Works to advertise employment, say aye. Opposed, say no. Okay, it's passed unanimously. Anyone else with any other business? All right, we'll move along to public recognition on non-agenda related items. Someone's coming up. This is the time you can speak to anything that's not on the agenda. Again, come forward, introduce yourself, give us your address. You will have five minutes to speak.
All right, thank you, Mayor. It's Patrick "Jay" Sonr E N E R S. And I come to thank you for one, for helping this good businessman. And that's what every neighborhood and every fellow township should have is community ship. Y'all should work with each other. Y'all should work everything out. I mean, there's no sense in complaining about something when you could tell your fellow man about it and get his opinion, a coworker, someone else get an opinion and try to work with it. But I seen an article in the newspaper and it kind of offended me because I seen something on Facebook that kind of related to like a bra setup, like where someone was asking people to come get their bra set up. Now, I don't know if it was for kids or anything, but I think it was localized in this town. And I think it resembles that news article that I just saw on, I forget the person's name. I wouldn't call him out anyways, but when you come to Gallatin, realize you're for Gallatin or just leave Gallatin. Hey, I fought for the truth, wisdom, knowledge and respect and I got it. Have a good night.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak under public recognition on non-agenda related items?
I don't fight you, comes up.
Little audience battle going on to see who gets to close the show. I know what's up.
Good evening again. Pascal Jovens, 1335 Long Island Park. Few things, the Plan Gallatin next week, great, but I'm wondering why at 4 p.m. that kind of restrict a lot of people to come and attend and comment. Lot of people work at 4 and if they don't work, with the traffic increasing, it's a lot harder to come and assist, you know, and be there. Took us 25 minutes to do 3.6 miles from my house tonight to come here. So people who work in Nashville and who like to attend, there's no way they're going to be there at 4. So it's kind of, it's kind of sad, you know, one of the input, input of citizen and we block them with the time. Noise, construction. I'd thank Stuart to be reactive on construction noise. I think that's something we need to look into because I think your grandchild still going to be living in a construction zone with everything is approved. And the fine of $50 is kind of joke for these people. They don't care about $50. So why don't we apply the method you want to apply for the food truck, food truck again? You know, get, get them off work, retire their work permit and make them pay a big fine if they break the noise ordinance, for example, for. ordinance. For example, for us, it's every day now, they start at 6:30, 6:15, 6:00 in the morning, with constant beeping, with the most annoying things you can think about, is beeping of a, of an engine, one mile away, you can hear it. And, you know, I know we had things like that a lot, but something needs to be done. And stuff I heard a few weeks ago was about the time the meetings were, were moved to 6:00 p.m. Thank you, Councilman, to let us know the story about that, but I went in a charter, and it still shows at 7:00 in the charter, so maybe I missed something, but did the charter got amended for the time of the council or not? Probably, Susan can answer that. She probably knows better than I do, but if it's in a charter, that should be applied. Again, it's just talking to let people come more easily, to get more involved in the council. And again, with more and more traffic, it's harder to come here at 6:00. So Andersonville is at 7:00, the county is at 7:00. So it's 7:00 in the charter. So if that has not been corrected in the charter, that should be. If not, why we don't apply the charter of the city. But I'm sure you'll let me know about that. Thank you,
My name is Joe DeBorden. I live at 10007 Hart Street, Gallatin, Tennessee. I rise tonight to share a little bit of news. We don't like to always come up here and complain, and I call it complaint department. There's not always need for complaints. So tonight, I'm going to change gears just a little bit, and that is, I ran across a couple of folks that work for our city. One was a lucky fella that made it out of South Side Chicago before he got shot. He's working for us in the city. We're glad to have him here, and I personally made sure that he was welcome in our city. So that's, that's a victory. The other one is, there was a gentleman that used to work for Mr. DePree's department. He was good with the concrete. But as you get older, you don't need to be fighting with concrete. So this gentleman got a chance to go over to work with my main man back here in the, in the water, water department, GPU. And now he's doing some inspection on new homes that are going in, of course, so that they can be under, be in good shape. The reason why I say something about this is because it is wonderful to have an opportunity to be an excellent employer. That's what we want as citizens of this community. We want to highlight that. And as Mr. DePree is looking for some folks, then to know they can get a good quality job here in Gallatin, the insurance that you just passed is, is going to help those folks with regard to help at the house, and I love, I love to have good, solid amenities for our, our people. So that's what I thought I'd run, run by you this trip. All right, the final thing is, we're going to get ready in the, in the middle of next month, about the 18th. It's going to be a big doings here in Gallatin. It's going to be the Wheel Day. There's going to be bicycles running through town with the bikers for sight with the Lions Club. And that night, we're going to have the big tractor pull. So we want everybody to get primed and ready. And we're looking for Brother Hayes on that bike ride, but I think he's retired. They tell me he's retired, so we're looking for him to lead us off there on that little deal. So thank you tonight, folks, and, and make sure that we have a good quality place to live here in Gallatin. Thank you.
Mr. DeBorden, is there anyone else wishing to speak under public recognition on non-agenda-related I see no one, so I'll declare public recognition on non-agenda-related items closed. And with that, we need one more motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn by Councilman Alexander, second by Councilman Hayes. All in favor, say aye. We are adjourned. I wish you all a lovely evening. Stay safe, and we'll look forward to seeing you back here. Bye-bye.